The study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for April the nineteenth.
Recording in progress.
I'd like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one. We have three action items or working items on our two working items. Our first item is a referendum on campaign finance reporting. And our second item is prohibiting the possession of deadly weapons on city owned property. And the third item in our staff report will discuss a new full time employee for the position of licensing technician. As is our custom, we'd like to begin our program with citizen comment and citizens may provide may speak on any item that is on the agendas or items number one, two and three. If you would like to speak, we will bring you into the meeting if you would raise your hand in the zoom format at the bottom of the screen, you'll see the participant button. If you would click that there's a a little icon says raise hand and if you will raise your hand, we will bring you into the meeting. And when we do, you'll have three minutes to address the council on any item on the agenda tonight. So, Mischek, is there anyone that has raised their hand in the zoom format?
No mayor, no one has raised their hand. I just want to point out mayor, I'll just say one more time for the record that councillor whole team is on the phone. You can't see her on the screen as she is on the phone.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a caller. I'm going to unmute and see if they'd like to speak and otherwise no hands.
All right. So if you were a caller who would like to speak on any item on the agenda tonight, you may unmute yourself and we'll bring you into the meeting. Or once again, if you are joining us on the zoom format, if you would raise your hand in the zoom format, which is located at the bottom of the screen and the participant button, we will bring you into the meeting and you'll have three minutes to address the council on any item on the agenda. So one more time, are there any citizens wishing to speak under citizens' right to speak tonight? Okay, I don't see any. So we will close our citizens' right to speak and go to our first agenda item. This is item number one referendum campaign finance reporting. And we have a report from Mr. Dahl in our packet, but I will start with our team manager, Mr. Goff.
Yeah, my lights are just flickering too. So, Mr. Dahl will will take this.
Mr. Dahl.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Happy to be here. I hope your power gets restored soon. You have a memo from me and the the desire of the council has has been to see what options it has for requiring campaign disclosure reports from small issue committees, really any issue committee. But in the initiative referendum context in particular, really any issue that is brought to you by the citizens typically those are through initiative or referendum, although under the law, the council also has the right to refer questions to the electorate and that has happened a few times at the city. It's rare, but that has also taken place. But in all of those circumstances, you may well have a citizens committee that organizes to support or oppose that that issue. And the council has asked, well, whether and what degree can we require disclosure reports from these committees? The answer is not very much for what amounts to small scale committees. And I included just the summary really of a decision by the or appeals for the Tenth Circuit. That's the federal Court of Appeals for our our circuit includes a number of western states, including Colorado in the Williams case. And you can see there that that even where only thirty five hundred or where thirty five hundred dollars was spent. The the court very clearly said, while you can require some form of registration for these committees, you may not require the government not require identification or reporting of the names of campaign contributors or the amounts they contributed at that level. I didn't give you the whole opinion, but the opinion goes on at some length to say that at this level, that is an impermissible constraint upon the First Amendment rights of members of those committees. And the court left room for there to be disclosure requirements of contributors and amounts for committees that would raise more than than that amount. So the state legislature reacted to this opinion by enacting a statute that, as I described to you, creates a small scale issue committee regime requiring a registration only, whereas your bank account, what's the name of the committee and what's the issue to which it's in with which it's interested. And up to the collection of five thousand dollars by such a small sale committee, that is all that's required. If it ends up collecting more than five thousand dollars, then that triggers into the state disclosure regime. Disclosure of the contributors and the amounts. But below that amount, the disclosure is really very limited. And that is typically the feature of small issue committees for questions that would be seen here in Wheat Ridge. So the choices and options that the council has are somewhat limited. I've attached, I believe, also the ordinance that council adopted last year, early this year, I guess. Those track to require the fair campaign disclosure requirements as a feature of the city's code. Now that again, doesn't change the impact of the Williams decision of the state statute. But we do have our campaign reporting requirements and and those can be, those are already in in the code. So there's no more really this council needs to do on that subject. Council could, you know, highlight the disclosure requirements and valid elections by adopting a local disclosure regime that mirrors what is now a state statutory regime. But I want to be clear that that wouldn't allow you to avoid the implication of the Williams decision to the effect that for these small committees, disclosure of the names of contributors and the amounts they contributed, it's not something you can require. Net of this, of course, is that there are really limited avenues for the city at these local small issue committee operations to to learn about them. You can certainly get them to register, tell you who they are and where their bank accounts and what issue they're involved in. Beyond that, no disclosure reporting requirements until they reach that five thousand dollar threshold. Be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Questions from council of Mr. Dahl? I don't see any hands for questions. I believe Ms. Saltine is on the on the telephone. So if you have a question, please unmute and we'll we'll get your question. Any other questions for Mr. Dahl? Is there any any desire on council to move forward with any kind of an ordinance relating to the items that he discussed? Or should we just consider that? Now, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think at this time, unless there's a specific complaint or an issue that comes up in the next election cycle or sometime in the next year, I think we should wait until something comes up to where we would need to respond to this. At this time, it doesn't sound like that there's much we can do, even if we wanted to.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions? Then let let me see a show of hands that on a consensus to to take no further action on this at this time. Okay, that's a that's a consensus right there. So let's thank Mr. Dahl for your work on this item and we will not move forward with anything at this time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. You may be on the docket again on our second item. Our second item is prohibiting the possession of deadly weapons on city owned property. And, Mr. Goff, do you have any opening remarks on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, I will start this this issue and then Mr. Dahl can jump in when he likes. His his office helped draft this memo and and did some research for us. So so currently the city's code laws does not prohibit the open carry of deadly weapons on city owned property. Numerous years ago, the Colorado Legislature enacted legislation addressing this issue. Staff did bring forward an ordinance in two thousand and three to city, the council at that time to align the city's code with the new state statute, but council at that time chose not to proceed with anything. This issue was was brought up again very recently, this last November during the election. City Hall and Recreation Center in in Wheat Ridge were polling places for this last general election. And it's a coordinated election with Jefferson County Election Office and and they inquired if we had an ordinance that did prohibit the open carry of weapons in Wheat Ridge and we told them no. I did bring this up briefly to city council at the time and there was a direction by city council to bring this forward to a future study session for discussion. So that's why we're here this evening. State law, the state law that was approved years ago restricts local governments from prohibiting any any concealed weapons unless the carrying of concealed weapons, unless the city takes additional security parameters and we can speak speak to those if you have questions. And the the law also allowed if local governments want to prohibit any open carry of weapons, they have to pass a law and they have to post signs prohibiting those open carry of weapons. So the city does have the ability to do this. As I mentioned before, we don't currently in our code. We did a little bit of of research to see what our neighbors do. And if you looked at your packet, there's a table in there and a majority of the cities that responded to the survey do have an ordinance that prohibits either firearms and or deadly weapons on their city properties. There are, there are some communities that don't at this time. Our neighboring communities, though, of Arvada, Lakewood, Golden and Denver and Jefferson County all do have ordinances in place that prohibits the open carry of weapons on their properties. So we are here this evening to have that discussion with you. First of all, there's, there's three recommendations we have. We, we do recommend that you draft or direct counsel or staff to bring forward an ordinance to align the city's code with state statute as legislation was approved years ago and this in the by the state. Then also allow the city to prohibit the carrying of deadly weapons on city property. And there's a definition of deadly weapon, which we can discuss and city properties with what we'd consider our city hall, the Recreation Center and any park or open space that is owned and managed and maintained by the city of Wheat Ridge. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Dahl, see if he has anything to add before we take questions.
Not not really. I think the memo covers the topic. Mr. Goff did. It's probably better that we receive your questions. I think the important line to draw, as I think councils well aware is, is the regulation of open carry, which is available to you and the regulation of concealed carry, which is also available to you, but at at considerable logistical expense, meaning the metal detectors in any location where you would be wanting to prohibit concealed carry. You see that was in courts for very good reasons. But but in order to prohibit a concealed carry in city council chambers, et cetera, that would mean metal detectors at the rec center, et cetera. So the main division of work or topics is the breakout between open carry and concealed carry. And I believe that tonight's focus is likely exclusively open carry, but I wanted to remind council that distinction. You're probably all aware of it, but it's an important one and the public needs to be aware of that as well and limitations on your ability to get into.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goff and Mr. Dahl. Do we have questions from council? Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So has this ever been an issue? Like, have we had, have we had any open carrying issues in the community?
Also, I'll start that and we do have Karen O'Donnell, our Parks Director on here, Chief, of course. You know, I don't, I don't, Ms. Dozeman, I'm not aware of any specific issues of an open carry, somebody actually carrying a weapon into city hall or parks or the rec center. I know we have examples from our neighbors. Obviously, we don't necessarily want it to happen. What example, what experience we have had, though, Ms. Dozeman is unfortunately, recently, in the last couple of years, we've, we've been we've experienced amendment to auditors who have not only been coming to Wheat Ridge, but they've been coming to many municipalities in Colorado. And as far as I know, they they haven't had any weapons with them, but they, they come to city halls to provoke employees, to get them to react, to try to violate their amendment one rights. And they're very aggressive when they do it. They come with cameras. They violate violate people's personal space. And then they'll, they'll put those videos online. And unfortunately, we had two employees who left us in the last couple of years because they were they were scared and their videos of them were put online and they received death threats from across the country. As 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 far as, you know, you deserve to have a bullet put in the back of your head. So, you know, imagine, imagine if somebody did come into city hall with an with a open carry weapon and our employees had to deal with that. They have to deal with aggression enough. And I think adding the layer of an open carry weapon in this situation, I think, would make it much worse. So I can't say we actually had an incident, Ms. Dozeman, with an with an open carry weapon, but we've had instances where employees are are attacked and harassed to a level that they feel for their life and they've quit. So I would not like to, I would like to be able to control our our environments in our for both our employees and our public so that there's not that added layer of aggression of an open carry weapon.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we aware of any other facilities or institutions like the schools or other areas that have some sort of gun free zone policy or or is the city the only one that would have that?
Well, as I mentioned, Mr. Urban, the county does. So all Jefferson County facilities that are owned by them, they prohibit open carry of weapons. The school district, I believe, I don't know if I can answer this. If anybody else, the chief may know this. I'm assuming schools are gun free zones from or weapon zones open carry.
Yep, that's, that's correct. And I don't know if Division Chief Lorenz's video is not working, but if he's on there, I think he has other information about gun free zones. Jim, are you able to unmute?
Well, I guess, to that point, can the city of Wheat Ridge declare a school a gun free zone or is that relegated to the school district to make that determination?
Yes, Mr. Urban, I believe so. I don't believe the city can do restrict weapons on any property except for the city owned property.
Okay.
All right, got a frog this evening.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you that all R one schools have a weapon free campuses property. I'm not positive about private schools in the area, but I would guess that they probably are.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am, my power is back on and I'm joining the meeting, not on my phone here, but I'm hoping that my service will hang on there for my comment. I think that it's important that we have, that we create safe spaces for the employees of the city. They, they are our employees and they are also our frontline workers for our community. And so I think not allowing open carry on city property is not unreasonable. And I appreciate this, this memo and I would have to say I was surprised at how many communities already have this and and considering how long it's been part of, you know, to be able to align with the state law definition of like deadly weapons, how long we have put that off. So I would be in favor of moving.
Additional discussion? Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I need to have some clarification because we're talking about prohibiting the possession of deadly weapons on city owned property. Okay, that's kind of a lot of things. So that's open carry, that's concealed, that's other kinds of things that, you know, people can have in a sock or underwear, whatever like that. So apparently at the rec center, there's signs that say no open carry, but did I get that right? That it can't be enforced?
That's correct, because we don't have, I'm sorry to interrupt, we don't have a backing that up. That's really just a recommendation almost. It's not written in that way because the sign says no, no. But the city doesn't have an ordinance supporting that. So if someone open carries into the rec center, that's not something we can cite into municipal court at all. We can only encourage them to leave that gun in the car. And when you think about it, that's, that's really probably not a good place for the city to be. It needs to either have a rule that it can truly enforce or or not have that message out there. If it can enforce it, it leads to expectations on the part of employees, other members of the public that that's something they can count on. It's not. I mean, it's, it's a Band-Aid, frankly, that has been done to, to, to address a level of concern, but but it is not something that we can do much with.
Thank you. Because I think this should be about all the weapons, whether it's open, concealed, whatever, if we need to have the security, just like the courts do for walking through the deals, if that's what you want to do, I don't know, but I don't think they don't allow this in court. Why would it be different in a city building, a rec center? I think it's going to be very hard, like in a park. But just to have the signs posted and things, we aren't living like we did twenty years ago. So this thing about thinking, well, you know, it'll be okay. It's not just the rights of employees, it's the rights of the people who live in Wheat Ridge that come to Wheat Ridge just to do their everyday business or to have fun. And the idea of deadly weapons on city owned property. Exactly why do we need that? Why do we need to have that? Why do we need the deadly weapons? When we've got all these other cities that have passed things and we just kind of haven't done it. It's very concerning. So I, I think it should, we should not have allow any of it or say that and not have different rules for different buildings, for the rec center, for the city offices, for the parks. That's too confusing for people. And, you know, just make it simple and, you know, if you want a concealed weapon, go to another city. Go do something over there. But here, we need to be concerned about the people who live here that want to go to the rec center and just do whatever they want to do. You never know when something's going to tip somebody off anymore. And I just think we should be concrete and just be clear. This is what city of Wheat Ridge states. And then everybody would know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if Chief could maybe give us some more information about concealed carry? I don't support adding metal detectors and all of our city parks in that business. But I also know that to get a concealed carry permit, not only do you have to take a class, but then I think you have to register with your, with your local police department. And so I wonder if Chief could just tell us a little bit about that process for those who who don't necessarily know what you have to go through to have it.
Thank you. Chief, can you give us a rundown on on the, what it takes to get a concealed weapons license?
Yeah, I can give you my best since I've been through it, but I think Lorenz, again, is probably an expert on that. We, we do have a pretty rigorous process here. Jim, are you still on there?
Yes, yeah, I'm here.
The concealed weapons to get that, aside from the class and the permit background, is there any other steps in there that we're missing?
So you, you, you apply through the county, through the county that you live in. You have to have some kind of indication that you've had training in this area and the sheriff can sign off on a concealed concealed weapon permit. Under most circumstances, a concealed weapons permit will allow you to go to places like like council meetings, for example, in in some cities would allow you to be have a concealed weapon inside if you have that permit. Not sure Patrick may be able to say more about how this, how ours is constructed, if it allows that or not, because I've seen a couple of different versions of the of the.
If it, I'm sorry, Mr. Lawrence, if if it allows concealed weapons?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, well, we haven't really drafted an ordinance yet. We're just, we're looking to get direction from city council. If city council wants us to address concealed weapons, we could, but as Mr. Dahl said, we'd have to have, we'd have to put those extra security parameters in place. So we're not, we're not recommending that this evening. We're recommending that we just focus on the open carry of weapons, deadly weapons.
Additional discussion. I had a question, Mr. Goff. Have we not, so our city code currently does not align with the state code with respect to concealed carry?
It, it does not, not, not what they passed back in, I think, two thousand and three.
Three, okay. Thank you. Additional questions? Comments? Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just, I just have to have full disclosure because I think a lot of people don't really know what the face of CCW permit holder is. And I am one of them and I have been for a number of years, as have many of my family members. And when we're talking about criminals coming in with the intent to do harm, my, 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 my reaction would be to save myself and those that are are near me. And I would easily lay down my life for any one of you if if it ever came to that. So I, I just, I don't want to criminalize and put a stereotype on that kind of behavior or or that kind of security that our Second Amendment rights allow us to have. And this is a very, very passionate topic for me. And I believe in gun, gun ownership. I believe And I believe in gun, gun ownership, I believe in the right to life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. And like, it's one of the, one of those things where I understand for the sake of staff and, and for them to feel safe and secure in their jobs, like I understand not wanting to have open carry, especially around elections, because I know that that's where this topic originally stemmed from. But I, I would never support regulating concealed carry weapons.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson, you've spoken once, is there anyone, before I go back to Ms. Hutchinson, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wonder why in schools there are no weapons allowed, but we're looking at city buildings and we have different variables here. Schools say no, no weapons, like our one schools, but city buildings, it's like, well, you know, it's my right or whatever and things like that. You know, people can be fine and purchase weapons and be just fine and they're out there doing crimes right now. I just think, why, why put ourselves in that? There's always a police officer that's in city council meetings.
Thank you. Additional comments, Ms. Nosler Beck?
Mayor, I just have a question about how this translates for not city buildings. Like what does this look like for parks? And like, how is that enforced? And maybe this is a question for Chief Murtha, but I know we're just like forming this, so maybe we don't know what that, that looks like.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start that, Councilmember, Councilwoman Nosler Beck. It, yeah, it's really up to city council, you can limit this for just certain buildings, certain facilities or all, you could do it all for all city owned property, which would include parks. Some cities do it differently. And we'd recommend that you do it for, for all city owned property, including parks. And I think the chief could speak to that on enforcement.
Yeah, thank you, Patrick, I, I think the enforcement part is easy to, well, it's easy for the open carry part. The concealed weapon part is, is obviously a little more difficult. And that would certainly require metal detection and staffing of that. If, if, if we were going to have that type of ordinance where we didn't allow concealed carry into certain buildings or into all Wheat Ridge buildings, we would, we would have to staff that. There's certainly a, an economic impact there, or if we just made it a rule and then suggested that if we discover that at some point, we would come and enforce it and, and then the method of enforcement would be certainly subject to interpretation. But it could be that we would craft the law, I guess, in Jerry Doll's mind, I'm not sure how he, he's thinking about this now, but it may be that you're warned and if you don't, if you refuse to leave, then at that point you're cited, you're trespassed, whatever it is, or you're cited for open carry on, on the property. But certainly the enforcement could be crafted to, to, to some extent to meet the demands of the, the council, I think. Am I off on that, Mr. Doll?
No, it can be, it can be structured that way, there are other models in city enforcement of regulations where, where there's, there's a first a warning and then next a citation in municipal court. So there can be an ascending scale of enforcement activity and fine activity on conviction. The council has done that in the past for certain nuisance matters. And, and let's also remember that, that all enforcement officers, police officers always have the discretion unless counsel says they don't, to consider a warning. It's no different than speeding or anything else where enforcing officer has, has, as he or she really should, the discretion to evaluate that particular situation, determine if it was inadvertent, whether and to what degree persons in the building felt threatened by seeing that gun or didn't at all. And, and so there's a range of things, I think the key decision for the council is, do you want to see a, a, an open carry prohibition? And if so, on what, city buildings and property or all city buildings and property? Once we have that, we can, we can craft it and bring it to you either in study session again with some of the details fleshed out or at first reading, I'd be inclined to say study session so that you're very, very comfortable with it when it hits first reading. But to answer the chief's question, we can adjust enforcement mechanism in the ordinance in a way that allows for appropriate discretion and on the part of the enforcing officer.
Yeah, my, my recommendation, I guess, just initially is that we would, we would warn somebody and then if they didn't heed our warning, we would take action on that. So that, that's how I recommend it, if we intercept somebody that has a weapon, you need to leave, stow that weapon in your vehicle, whatever it is. And then if that doesn't happen, we, we would take action. I think, I think that gives people who, to Mr. Doll's point inadvertently, come on our property with a weapon and don't understand the, the rule and opportunity to, to repair their decision and before we have to take enforcement action. But it does dissuade, it does give us the opportunity if somebody comes to a council meeting and, and rests a weapon on their lap, the opportunity to, to remove them or the weapon from, from an intimidating posture inside of a, a meeting or any other event like that.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy and then Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just would, I have a question for City Manager Goff, but prior, before my question, I'd just like to say that, you know, really, we're not studying here, are guns bad or are guns good or are people who own guns criminals? Or, you know, that's, that's not what we're studying, what we're trying to figure out is, is there a way to keep our staff, our citizens when they're at the rec center or at the park, another level of safe? And because I absolutely do not believe that if you own a gun, you're a criminal or a bad person. So, so my question to Mr. Goff is, in the memo, if there's aligning the city code with state law concerning concealed carry, what do we need to do, what does that mean? What do we need to do to align with the concealed carry with the state?
Excuse me, state statute says that if you want to regulate or prohibit open carry, you have to pass a law. So passing an ordinance would align with state statute to do that.
I think she was asking about concealed carry.
In cons-
Yeah, in this memo, the first bullet point is aligning city code with state law concerning concealed carry.
I, I think just using the language that's in the, in the state statute that says we, we don't, we cannot regulate it. I think there's specific language in the state code, Mr. Doll, do you know, I think Carmen Berry put that recommendation in?
Yeah, she did, there's just some terminology that's really antiquated. I don't have it right under my elbow, but there's some terminology in our code right now that's just antiquated around, around weapons. And, and we, we could be, we should be fixing that, no matter what, and it would, that wouldn't be the open carry prohibition. That, that's really just a modernizing terminology activity that if we're going to do an ordinance on open carry, we should be, we should be fixing that as well. But, but it's not a concealed carry local requirement at all.
So it it changes, if we do nothing about concealed carry, it changes really nothing about the concealed carry rights that we currently have in our community.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I guess my question about concealed carry is, I mean, it's my understanding, sorry, with my power out, I'm just getting back with my packet online. But it's my understanding that some of this was brought forward around concern for safety for people in polling places. Would we be able to enact some sort of regulation specific to polling places while they're being used for the purpose of polling? That we could enforce like in a location and a time? Or do we really have to approach this sort of more universally in, in terms of regulating concealed carry?
That's a very good question, I think that what we certainly could do and we, I think easy enough to structure it this way is that to the extent the council wanted to have a concealed carry prohibition that would apply to polling places, if we could articulate that concealed carry is prohibited in polling places to the extent the city has prior to the, you know, opening of the polls, established the requisite electronic, you know, metal detector, security requirements, just as you would have for a courthouse. So it's really kind of a temporary screening system. And if the polling place went itself to that, in terms of having the, the right spot for the metal detector, then, then that would work. And for example, council chambers, as you know, doubles as, or doesn't double as a courtroom, but we, we have that metal detector there that they wheel out for court. And so that would be possible, council wanted to prohibit concealed carry in, at polling places. We could articulate that in an ordinance, we need to be ready then to stand ready to provide that security metal detector system at the appropriate perimeter doorway, whatever connection with the polling place, it would be doable.
Ms. Hulteen, were you asking about open carry or concealed though at polling?
I was asking about concealed.
Oh, concealed.
Yeah, so I generally support the open carry as a, as a blanket regulation on all city property. And then I'm just thinking, you know, it, when I think about, you know, just me as a, as a citizen, but then also me as an elected official, you know, I think there are certain places where there is more susceptibility to, you know, the type of hostilities where maybe people are bringing, you know, grudges. And, you know, I just, I, I feel like, you know, there are certain, you know, places where people congregate and especially with the concerns around polling that was expressed, I'd be interested in, could we carve that out without having to look more generally at concealed carry regulation?
Gotcha.
Thank you, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so a, as I understand it, within the sort of concealed carry realm, the only way to regulate that is through the use of a metal detector. And as it comes to the election process, I would see a metal detector to be a hindrance to the ballot box that wouldn't withstand some sort of legal scrutiny just by itself, correct?
That's, that's an interesting wrinkle, I hadn't thought about it in quite that way. And I'll confess, I haven't done research around that, that specific issue, but your point is well made that, that like any other constraint on voting, that could be seen as one, if you've got to pass through some kind of detector with an officer there, that's off putting. It would be off putting to some people, nevertheless, our courtrooms, when you think about it, are available to the entire public. Now generally, you're there because you have to be there for court, although we allow people to attend court to watch court and they still have to go through that. I'm taking too long to say that's not something I've researched, but I'm happy to do so. If, if there is a consensus on council that there's an interest in prohibiting concealed carry at polling places, I'm happy to do some research because your, your point is well taken, it may well be that is too much of an imposition on a jealously guarded constitutional right.
Certainly, and I guess that was part of my reason for bringing it up because the, the impetus for this discussion initially was the threats and the intimidation presented by an open carry situation near or at the ballot box. And so that in my mind is, is a valid concern that if someone's open carrying near the ballot box, that would hinder people's willingness to go to that ballot box. And I think similarly, if we had a metal detector, that would cause that as well. For people who are concealing their carrying of a firearm, they're not displaying it, they're not showing it in, in any way that would cause concern for other people going to the ballot box. So I would be opposed to requiring any sort of regulations on concealed carry near the ballot box.
Thank you, I had a question and then I'll go to Ms. Hulteen. If we do, if we were to prohibit the carrying of deadly weapons on city owned property, what are our posting requirements or signage requirements relative to that?
State statute requires that you do post that, so we would have to, like we already do have, as somebody mentioned, we do have it, it posted at City Hall and Rec Center. But as, as we mentioned, we can't currently enforce that. So if we're gonna, if you want to prohibit it at parks, we would have to post signs along with the other, any other signage that we have at parks.
So that would be sort of periodic postings at the locations where it would be prohibited, I guess, in a somewhat reasonable manner or?
I don't know if it'd be periodic, I think, I think the signs would have to be up. If, if to enforce it, they would probably have to, the signs would have to be up, I don't, Mr. Doll?
Well, I, I didn't mean periodic, I, I meant spaced out, if you will. Not, not, and not in a time sense, in a location sense.
Yes, and, and honestly, I think a court would look at that from a reasonable standard. Let's remember that, that we have, if people expect to see the rules around parks, does your dog need to be leashed, et cetera? And we would post in the same locations, possibly a few more. But that would pass the, the court test because these are places people expect to see the rules around that park. And we put the, the open carry prohibition in that location.
Thank you, Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to share that after Councilmember Urban's comments about, you know, that type of enforcement and security might deter people from pulling places. I think encouraging people to, you know, use their right to vote is incredibly important. So with that, I, I would definitely walk back some of the thoughts on that and don't think it's, it's necessary unless there are other indicators that would call for having that type of security in our polling places.
Thank you, additional discussion, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just, I, I want to point out that concealed carrying of a firearm is illegal unless you have the permit. And if you have the permit to do that, if you're licensed to do that, that means that you have given your fingerprints to Jefferson County Sheriff, which it goes through the CBI and the FBI. You've had to take your class and you have to have your address on file. If you move, it needs to be changed within 30 days. So that, that type of concealed firearm carrying is completely different than a concealed firearm carrying without a permit and completely different from open carry. So again, I'd like to say that I, I don't support changing any of our regulations around the concealed carry because that is only legal if you have a permit. It's not legal if you have not gone through the classes and the fingerprint on our city property.
Thank you. Are there any, are there any further questions or, or comments or are we ready to, we, we have three recommendations in our package, are you ready to sort of look at a, a, I'll go on to our clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Very briefly, to Mr. Urban's earlier point, last summer, there was a movement among some, some political interests to guard polling places against illicit voting. That effort was put forward by the then President of the United States. When I called Jefferson County to ask them, could we do that here at the city in the polling place? Their answer was the county does not have a prohibition against that, only the city can do that. But we do have the right to do, to prohibit bringing firearms, including concealed carry weapons, into the polling place if we write an ordinance that says that, that would align with the statute. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And if I'm not mistaken, the polling places that we have are located on city property, is that right, Mr. Mr. Goff?
They have been, yes, the last, the last election rec center and city hall were our two polling places on public property.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Hoppy.
I'm going to try to move forward to consensus.
Okay.
Like to ask for a census to align the city code with the state law concerning concealed carry. Again, this is an antique definitions and verbiage according to our city attorney, Mr. Doll.
Okay. Well, show of hands in favor of that proposition? And will the clerk?
I'm so sorry. Can I have Councilmember Happy repeat that again? I don't know if it was my internet or her.
It was the first bullet point on our recommendations, aligning the city code with state law concerning concealed carry. So this isn't, if you're in favor of that, please raise your hand. Okay, we have consensus on that. You want to go ahead with the second one, Ms. Hoppy? The second one, aligning the city code with the state law definition of deadly weapon. Are you in favor of that? If you are, please raise your hand. Okay, we have consensus on that. And the third item is prohibiting the carry of deadly weapons on city owned property. All those in favor of that proposition, please raise your hand. And we have consensus on that. Mr. Goff, those were the questions that you were after. Do you have any other, any other requirements on this, on this item?
Not on this item, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Doll, you, I assume have the information you need to bring us some great legislation.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Then we are going to go, uh, thank you very much for that discussion. Um, let's see, we're going to go to our staff reports. Mr. Goff.
I will turn this one over to Ms. Ally Scheck, our Administrative Services Director.
Ms. Scheck, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Ally Scheck, Administrative Services Director. I am here tonight to just chat with you about a request in your packet for a new position, and that's for licensing technician. So I'd just like to spend a minute to walk through some of the main points of the memo that's included in your packet for those that, that, that are listening in the public. As you're all aware, this council has recently added some new licensing programs in, in, in recent months that, you know, prioritize and promote the health, safety and quality of life in our neighborhoods. And these include massage, short-term rental, tobacco, most recently tobacco retailing. And then I know that you've directed staff to bring you a hotel licensing program to consider. Additionally, at your strategic planning retreat on February 20th, you discussed permitting and licensing as an area of focus. And I look forward to talking with you more about that on a future meeting. But we, just from the discussion, it's clear that part of, part of the goal is to improve customer service and support in the areas of tax and licensing. So what we've learned so far is that the workload associated with these licensing programs is substantial. And in the case of massage, working, it's working. These programs require significant time in engaging with customers, particularly in the world of sort of educating these businesses and what will be homeowners in the case of short-term rentals and neighbors about requirements, answering questions, helping them sort of to along that road to proper licensing and compliance. Time is also required to track compliance and non-compliance depending on the licensing program. In the case of massage, we assigned the massage licensing, we assigned actually the city's revenue auditor, Travis Anderson, to do most of the legwork on that implement, on the implementation of that program with a lot of support from our finance manager, Mark Colvin. And I think you saw in your packet that we have a lean, awesome finance team of just six and a half employees, which includes payroll. And that, you know, it was, they've also been working most recently on gearing up for our short-term rental ordinance effective date of May 1. And of course, timing, the, the treasurer and I were talking about this earlier this week or last week was fairly serendipitous in that we are auditing, we backed off just a little bit through the pandemic and also our revenue auditor had wrapped up the legwork on a very intensive lodgers tax case that was in front of the Department of Revenue for a hearing. And so he, he really did divert a lot of his attention to massage and currently short-term rental. But as we emerge from this, from this pandemic into the next phase, we really need to get him back on auditing full-time to ensure that our businesses are complying with our tax code. So in your packet is a job description for a licensing technician. This is a very, I would say frontline worker type position, heavily focused on customer service. And that's the main requirement for the position. This position will implement and administer the new programs, including massage, short-term rental, tobacco retailing, and any future programs that you, that you may consider. The position will also serve as a backup to the revenue technician. So that's sort of the additional customer support and education, which we know is very important, particularly during certain times of the year. November, end of October, November through March is a particularly crazy time. So again, heavy customer service position. We crafted the job description. Our human resources managers classified that position. And we, given the workload, given what we see coming with the American Rescue Plan, in, in terms of the workload, our recommendation is that we move on this now. Financially, there's a, a, a strong likelihood that revenues from these new programs will actually cover the position eventually. We have not, the only revenues that we've budgeted so far, I think was thirteen thousand four fifty, thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to cover the vendor management program of the short-term rental licensing. But what we haven't done in our budget is factor in lodgers taxes for short-term rental. We haven't factored in licensing fees for tobacco retailing. Massage is negligible. So we estimate that tobacco retailing will be about seventeen thousand five hundred, based on about seventy retailers. But again, we're going to, in our business friendly approach, license, license them once in July of this year, and then that will actually carry through 2022. But we know that with short-term rentals, we'll be earning lodgers tax, which again, we wanted to budget conservatively and not knowing how things will go in that area just yet, we haven't, we haven't put any revenue in except for some, some minor licensing fees, again, to cover the program management. Massage doesn't have, again, very negligible, about $600 in licensing fees for massage. That was a very different program. And of course, hotel licensing is to be determined. However, all that to say, in time, we believe revenues will offset this position. We're doing well financially. Our revenues are, as you know, we, we budgeted conservatively. We budgeted about revenues about 10% down from last year. And we're certainly not seeing that in sales tax and licensing so far through quarter one. So that's a quick, high level summary of what's contained in your memo. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll open it up to council for questions. Please raise your hand. Ms. Nosler Beck and then Ms. Hoppy.
I just wanted to make a comment that I like that we're bringing on someone potentially here to help make this more, you know, business friendly and help streamline the process. But I think it's also a great opportunity that we're prioritizing that this, this position will, you know, be available and, and ready to help businesses because we know how important that, that is. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
Yeah, I would like to echo, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo what Councilwoman Nosler Beck just said. And, and, and add that the heavy lift that our little small team has been doing and I, is greatly appreciated. And knowing that we have a tight budget and that that's what needs to happen. And, and then identifying that this position will most likely be able to pay for itself is, is also greatly appreciated. So I just would like to say thank you very much to Ms. Scheck and her team for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hoppy.
Additional, Ms. Weaver.
I was just going to add, all, all of those things, we, we desperately need this for all of the licensing that we have been setting up in the last few months. And I think this will be really, really helpful and, and will definitely pay for itself. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Okay, do we have, let me see if we have a consensus to move forward with the recommendation to add this position? If you're in favor of that, please raise your hand. Looks like we have consensus on that, Ms. Scheck. So please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll come back next week then with a resolution for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That will conclude our, Mr. Goff, do you have any more on your staff report?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of items. I sent the council a couple of emails over the weekend. One having to do with returning to council chambers for in-person meetings. Hopefully you, you saw that email, but I think, I think you've all, if you haven't, you, you've heard or at least understand that the Jefferson County Health Department is progressing forward with a, a plan to get the county to what they're calling level clear by May 16th. I can't find my email, 16th, right, Ally? Or 17th, 16th through 17th? The direction we received from city council several weeks ago was to put a plan together to get back to in-person meetings when the county was at level green. So level clear will be even better than level green with, with rare, hardly any restrictions. There might be a couple still with mask and such, but so we've, we're gonna reach that hurdle by May 16th. But the other part of council's consensus was that city council had the ability to get vaccinated if they so chose and develop some type of immunity. So the first meeting after the May 16th timeframe would be May 24th. And wanted to get some direction from council if, if you are ready to come back on May 24th or need a little bit more time for vaccinations and a comfort level to be back in person.
Okay, Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm excited to hear that we're getting close to this for a lot of reasons. It's a good indicator for our community at large and I'm looking forward to being back in the room with you guys. My, I guess my thoughts are just personally, I'm, I'm comfortable with that timeline. I think just logistically, just for clarity of communicating with the public so that we're not running into any confusion or issues about, you know, where to find us, I would just propose we look at the first meeting in June as, as our startup date in person, if that's what the rest of council decides they're comfortable with.
Okay. Additional discussion on this item? Ms. Nosler Beck.
Um, I, I'm still concerned a little bit about, not a little bit, a lot about, you know, continued COVID, like outbreaks or if some, if someone has an exposure. And I, I'm wondering, one, if, you know, a member of council is exposed, would they still have an opportunity to potentially participate in council over Zoom or something like that? Or if all of council is exposed and we have to, you know, quarantine or something like that for two weeks, could we go back to a Zoom platform? Like, could we have a, a plan A or B or C or D potentially? To, to help us kind of keep business going as usual? Because I think that even though we're getting vaccinated, there still may be some exposures to different strains and stuff like that.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll let Ms. Scheck pipe up on this too, because we've, we've been managing with flexibility for the last, I think, how many, how many months has it been now? 14 months? So I, I think we would have to keep that in mind, Ms. Beck, and because we don't know, right? But we're, we're following, I think, our, our county public health orders and, and their plans as closely as we can, but things could reverse. So our, you know, our plans are to keep a very hybrid system in place, probably for the, for the long term. For the, for those situations and any situation in the future, right? Once the pandemic is over. So I think if council's comfortable with that, there always will be the opportunity for a council member to zoom in for numerous reasons. And, you know, hopefully, you know, if we, we have to quarantine the whole council, I, I hope it doesn't get to that point, but we, you know, I think we're ready for that if, if we have to do that. Ally, do you have anything to add to that?
No, we will take direction from council. Technologically, we can do that. We can absolutely continue hybrid model. No, no problem. We can do that.
Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that the the consensus was that we would be in a study session format. And which allows for social distancing. So I, I'm comfortable with coming back in May. If, if others are more comfortable with coming back in June because we're further out from the, the alleged when we were going to hit clear date, then I'm comfortable with that also. I'd also like to mention that Councilman Urban brought up questions around what are our rules around participating remotely? And we do have a review of council rules coming up. And so maybe defining some of those expectations around remote participation is, and, and that was the suggestion when Councilmember Urban brought up, was that we have council rules coming up. Maybe we have that discussion when we do council rules so that we can put it into our council rules. And we know everybody, everybody has the same expectation.
Thank you. I had a, I had a couple of questions. Oh, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess as we look at this, my preference would be to start in May, knowing that may, everybody may not be ready to jump in, go in, in person. And they could do it virtually in that May meeting. And then, you know, working up to the June 14th city council meeting and trying to get everybody there face to face. And sort of easing into this and knowing that this is going to take city staff a while to figure out how to do this in person as well. So it may not necessarily go as well beginning, but I'd like to try to get this done as early as possible. On the issue of writing the rules around council, sort of the code of conduct, as you will, or the, the way that we handle meetings, you know, I guess I'd like to ask that if someone's going to call in or use Zoom as a way to participate, that they do that for, I don't, I don't know if we have to come up with a list of reasons why they should be allowed to use that call-in function, but I guess just sort of a professional courtesy that you're using it for appropriate purposes, not just to call in on your vacation or be distracted in some way like that. So that's my thought.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions myself. When, when we talked about meeting down on the, on the main floor where we do our study sessions in the large tables and opening up the divider into the court chamber, do we have an opportunity to, to make those tables into a half circle so that we all would be facing the audience? I'm not, I'm, I'm, we, in, in the past, when we set up for a, you know, for a study session, we, we do it around a square. So, but I'm, I'm concerned that, that do we have the opportunity for all the counselors to be able to face the public? You think?
Um, Mr. Goff, shall I respond to that? We, we talked about it when we were laying it out, Mayor. Not and still have distance between you. So, yeah, so what we found worked, we, we tried, we tried that. It's not great. You, you won't be able to see each other at all, actually, because it would be so wide. But also you wouldn't have that, that six foot of distance between you all. So the goal here is to have very similar to the strategic planning retreat that you experienced at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center, is that really everyone has their own table as a way to, as a way to start. And a reminder that we also, while the positions up on the dais is somewhat tight and, and close to each other, we do have the little plexi partitions that we ordered just to make sure we had them in, in stock. And so as you make sure we had them in, in stock. And so as you evolve this program from perhaps that, that bigger study session back to the dais, keep, keep that in mind as well. And we could certainly try that setup, Mayor. But again, it won't put that same level of distance between you all.
Okay. And then when we're there in person, are we going to have computer screens in front of us and have the, have the little squares going on? Or we have new video capability in the chamber? Does that help us out? Or speak a little bit to that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. And the, what we would suggest in the, I'll call it the, the temporary, the study session setup, would be that you all bring your own surfaces or laptops to, to sort of look at the Zoom right in front of you. We'll also project the Zoom up under the screen. And we will install a second screen in the court area for the public so that it's easy for them to see that as well. But we would recommend that you all have your own, your own device to be able to see that in front of you. You won't, you won't use your device's sound. So everyone will be on mute and we'll use microphones. We'll be using council audio. And Council Jesse and his crew, and Stephen, who's, who are listening right now, will be picking your, you up through council, the, the new cameras that are in council. But so the, the device is really so that you can see others that are on Zoom. Does that make sense?
But we wouldn't be seeing ourself on Zoom. We would be on the, on the live feed out of council chambers?
Exactly.
Okay. And then I'll, I'll put my preference in here also. The, you know, the 17th of May is a Monday, we'll have a meeting that, that night. The next meeting we would have on the 24th is a study session. The Monday after that is the 31st of May, a holiday and a fifth Monday. I'll be honest with you, I would rather come back on, to kind of come back at a study session meeting on the 7th and, and be able to sort of have staff have a little time to put all those things together. Perhaps in the interim, we'd be able to visit council chambers and understand a little bit about where we were. And so my, my vote would be to come back on June 7th for a study session in council chambers if we're going to do that. Additional discussion? Ms. Hoppy and then Mr. Stites.
I'll let Mr. Stites go ahead. I've already had an opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually just going to agree with you. I think that June 7th is a good day to come back right after that fifth Monday and starting fresh in June makes sense. And I, I think starting out in that, that format, the study session format is probably a good way to go. And then getting back on the, on the dais as soon as we can. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy. And thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to ask for a consensus that we move forward, that we come back to council chambers in the option three as was presented to us, which is the study session set seven.
Okay, the consensus on coming back on the 7th, we have consensus on that. Thank you. Mr. Goff, do you have other, other matters that, on this that we need to discuss?
Not on this. Thank you very much for that direction. We'll make sure we're ready. Just one other quick item, though. I did send you an email, this was over the weekend, too, on our seizure and forfeiture committee. We're looking for a city council designee to sit on this committee. I think it's the chief still here. I'm not sure if the chief is. But Mr. Dahl, I know has been helping with the bylaws for this. It's, it's something that we've had in place for quite some time. But I think we're reorganizing it a little bit. We've always had an elected official on that. And the city, that it comprised of the Wheat Ridge Chief of Police, a council member, and then the district attorney from the First Judicial District. The committee meets very sporadically. So it's not, not a lot of work to it. But the committee is established to review, approve, or not approve requests for expenditures out of our police seizure fund. And the chief can maybe speak to this, if you have any questions a little bit more. But just looking for a council volunteer and we can appoint them next Monday if we get one. I have seen Ms. Weaver's.
Okay, I see Ms. Weaver weaving her fingers. Ms. Weaver, are you, are you the volunteer? She is. Okay, Ms. Weaver has volunteered for this position.
Yes, I, I am, I am volunteering. That sounds interesting. So Chief Murtha, make this really interesting, since I volunteered without understanding what.
I wish I could, but we, we don't, we don't spend much money out of that account. So maybe we'll spend money on meetings and we'll go to someplace good for that. I don't know.
Okay, that sounds good. No, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in helping.
Okay, well, we'll bring that. Mr. Goff, you have a, you have a volunteer.
Thank you much. That's it for me.
Okay, that, that concludes our staff report then. And we will go now to our elected officials reports. If you have a report for us, please indicate it and I'll, I'll call on you. Not all at once.
Snow and everybody wants to get home.
Okay, is there any, is there any, no more elected officials reports? Okay. We have reached the end of our agenda. Is there any more business to come before our study session tonight? Okay, I see none. And we do have snow going on in the, in the fair city of ours. So please be careful as you drive. We still have children going to school and, and more importantly, children making snowmen. So, and, and snow women. And so we're, we're, we're glad to have you all with us tonight. Please take care of yourselves and one another as you are able. And we will see you at our next meeting. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.